Good evening, everyone. I'd ask that you would please rise as Pastor Kate Burns leads the Sinner invocation, followed by the Pledge of Allegiance.
Let us pray. Good and gracious God, you established order in your creation, and you have called up leaders to faithfully and courageously govern the communities of people in their care. As we have just honored the memory of those elected to the office of President of our nation, and those still living, may we lift up in prayer all those that, God, you have given willing hearts to serve as leaders, for their responsibilities are many, and at times their responsibilities bear heavy burdens. Lord, these are difficult times we live in. We trust in your unfailing promise to see us through them, to maintain that order, to sustain us with your love, and bless us with your wisdom and grace. Guide the deliberations of these men and women as they do the business of this city, so that we all may benefit from their careful decision-making. We pray this in Jesus' name. Amen. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic of America, one nation, indivisible, with liberty, justice, and
Good evening, everyone. It's Tuesday, February 16th, 2021, and I will call this meeting of the Fergus Falls City Council to order. Roll call, please.
Here.
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 We have a quorum. Just a couple reminders. We have a number of people joining us on Zoom this evening, so you all are currently muted. If there is someone that would like to be a part of the conversation, use the raise your hand function. Clara will let me know, and if it's appropriate, I will call on you in that process. So, and we also have a, well, the fullest house I've seen in a while here. So, I think we're going to maybe move the agenda around a little bit to accommodate the issue that people are here to talk about. But I'll first call on our city administrator, Andrew Brumseth, for the approval of the agenda. You know, there's a couple items to add, I believe.
I do, yes. Thank you, your honor, members. Good evening. There are three new items to add to the agenda this evening, and two of them are very welcomed news. Under the consent agenda, we're going to add a resolution accepting a $500 donation from CHS for the fire department and rescue equipment, then approve the related budget adjustments for that donation. A second item under consent is a resolution accepting a $10,000 donation from the Dorothy and Jean Porter Family Fund for the library and approving the related budget adjustments for that donation. And then finally, under new business, we're going to give an update and answer some questions about the coyote situation that has plagued the city for the last month.
But the first two, you said, were going to be under the consent agenda?
That's correct. And if, your honor, your council members, if you want to move the agenda around, that would be just fine. I believe the majority of our guests are here this evening in relation to the airport discussion, and it may be appropriate to move that up.
Is that all right with everyone to move that up to the agenda?
Makes sense to me.
All right. So with that, I would entertain a motion approving the updated agenda that Andrew presented. Thanks, Caroline. Thank you, Krista. All in favor of that motion, say aye.
Aye.
Pose same sign. That motion carries. So, there are no public hearings and other bids to award, no petitions and communications. So before we get to the consent agenda, let's jump to old and unfinished business. The airport manager, fixed-based operator, says there's an update here. I'll just see what the wishes of the council are, but I'll just say, I think we've all are aware that we have a recommendation from staff and from the consultant hired to lead the process, finding a fixed-based operator and airport manager of Alex Aviation. And we also have a recommendation from the Airport Advisory Committee of a local proposal, which is HLS. So, if anyone from the council wishes to offer resolutions or views of those recommendations.
I would make a resolution to accept the recommendation of the Airport Advisory Committee to accept Sky Crew Services to manage the Fergus Falls Airport with the appropriate contractual language covering performance review.
Okay. If there's, if there's someone like to second that, then we will have discussion. Okay.
We can have a discussion, Adam.
Sure. We have a resolution. And I think, I know I personally have heard from a number of people on this, and so I would like to keep the discussion to the council, I think, at this point, at least to the start, to see if there's a consensus on the council of where we want to go with this. I have some, I think I have some serious issues with, with the process to have a recommendation from staff and also from the airport advisor that are so opposed, to have so many opposing letters that are just absolutely, it seems like they're coming from opposite ends of the universe, tells me that the process, there's something wrong with the process. And quite frankly, I'll just say the drama, the accusations of impropriety that have been, that have been thrown around from every single conceivable angle tells me, pardon me, tells me something is wrong with the process that we laid out. And I'm disappointed in some of the people and the way they behaved in this process. That's my two cents, and I'm only up to the council.
Well, I'm going to be on the top, the opposite end of the board here. We had a process that we went through for two years. The Airport Advisory Committee was involved with it. They knew what the questions and everything that was laid out was going to be. And the reason, I understand, the reason why we went with this third party was because they knew something like this was going to happen. And it's exactly what happened. And even I watched this interview process, and I listened to each and every one of those candidates. And when I was done with that interview process, the person that was recommended in the beginning was the only person who answered all the questions, had all the experience, had all the qualifications. Now, when it comes down to the interview process, I believe it was completely unprofessional and unfair. I have never seen an interview process where somebody was allowed to sit in the back of the room and listen to what the questions were and listen to what answers they gave. And with that in mind, that is strip up that. And then you bring in somebody who was invited to this interview process. The minute they say something, boom. Once this is all done, that person, when they started their deliberation process, they used his expression word for word, and they eliminated somebody who had all the qualifications, and even in the interview process did, answered every question and did everything better than everybody in there. That tells me there's a problem. And I am personally on the opposite end. I want to make a motion that we vote to approve the original candidate, and let's move this thing forward.
Okay. So, and we're not going to entertain that motion right now because we have a resolution on the floor. If that, any resolution, just so people know, to pass is going to take five affirmative votes. Right? So, Tom?
Yeah, I'll just, I'll say the, the process here doesn't, there were a lot of shortcomings in the process, and it's something that I, that I want to work with city staff on streamlining in the future, learning from this experience and, and preventing this from happening again. But I, I mean, I'm, I'm going to vote tonight to approve Sky Crew, the local, the local business, because just, a lot of it is because the outpouring of support that I've gotten. I mean, I've heard from a lot of people that are, that are in favor of keeping this local. I feel that no matter who we end up going with, what I want is a two-year contract, so we're not, we're not locked into an extended period of time, and I want to see, you know, regular performance reviews. But I think we, do you think we need to choose someone? And the process, no, it wasn't perfect. I don't necessarily agree with everything that Brent said. I think that the consultant did some things that were outside of what the Airport Advisory Board was expecting and prepared for. So, I just think we need to make a choice and go ahead. That's my two cents.
Thanks, Tom.
So, I'd like to know what changed from the time that they gave the unanimous, unanimous approval of this candidate to a week later when we decided, okay, we're going to, I mean, I think it was the biggest mistake we ever did, allowing them to have that opportunity. And a week later, we decided to say, okay, I figured the advisory board's got to have some say in something. To turn around and do the same process, everything came out the same, and then they use local. I mean, I'm not willing to turn around and hand our airport over to somebody as a training exercise, somebody who's never been an FBO, an airport manager, and let him learn on our dime and possibly fail, when we have somebody sitting right here who's got years of experience, he's got awards and everything else for doing exactly what we want him to do. I don't foresee him shortchanging Fergus Falls and putting Alexandria first. It's not in his best interest. And I think it'd be a grave mistake to hand it over to somebody as a learning process.
Thanks, Brent. Justin, did you, I'll just add, you know, this whole process, I've learned a lot. I'm not going to be the first to interject, but I know exactly what's going on at the airport. But I've heard from both sides of the issue, and I, to me, I agree with, with the mayor in terms of hitting pause. You know, we maybe didn't have the right process. We've learned through that. And I don't want to have this be a stain on any of the applicants who have applied to the airport. I would hope they all would still interject that. But I think we need to hit pause and redefine a working group that is consistent of staff, a couple council members, a couple advisory members, and I know we have a motion on the floor, but really define what we're looking for and who we're looking for, and then entertain those same candidates along with potentially anybody else that would be interested. I really think, in the current status that we're in, with people I've talked on both sides, that are local, that want us to go with Alex Aviation, and then other local people that want us to go with HLS, I think whoever we put in that position, we are setting them up to fail. And I don't think that's fair to them, and I don't think that's fair to the city. I think we need to define expectations a little better and then go back out and redo this. That might be paused for, you know, two, three months to really define that scope. But the current part-time or the fill-in spot, as I understand, we haven't heard any complaints about them or him, and I think he's doing a good job from what, us not getting complaints. So, I personally wouldn't support putting anybody forward at this point until we redefine as a council, staff, and advisory committee what exactly we're looking for. We got to this position from having a previous FBO manager, where it was advised that we, he moved on and retired, and, and they want to move the airport forward. And I just, I'm not comfortable with doing that until we have a better process in place to make sure we're making an informed and educated decision. And that, again, to say is not against any of the candidates that submitted their applications. I'm not saying anything regarding that. I think we've learned, or I've learned through this process, that we need to probably hit pause and redo it. So.
Your honor, if I may, can I just respond to Councilmember Thompson?
Certainly.
Briefly. I, you know, just, just on some of the, on some of the points that you made, I, I don't, throughout this process, I've, I've maintained that I don't want to speak for the Airport Advisory Board. I believe that, that members have emailed the council explaining why they took certain actions that they did. And, you know, the, the Airport Advisory Council is made up of people, of, of local pilots that want to see the airport do as well as possible. And so, I mean, they're, they're fully invested in seeing the airport grow and prosper and, and be successful, be an economic driver in the community. So therefore, with looking at it through that lens, I mean, I think that their recommendation carries a lot of weight. And then just another quick point of clarification, I, I think we're, the two companies that we're referring to tonight are Sky Crew LLC, or Sky Crew Services, and Alexandria Aviation. There's another company mentioned that I don't think is the right one.
Thank you. Sky Crew is the one that the resolution is due. Yes, Krista?
I just want to say I completely agree with, with what Justin said. I think we need to let some dust settle here, because anybody, if we made a decision right now, anybody filled that position, what, we'd be throwing under the wolves at this point, the back and forth. There's something got tainted somewhere, and we just, I think we need to step back, put on the brakes, and just give it, you know, some time to find and make an educated decision.
Thank you, Krista.
I'm kind of in the same boat with, with Justin and Krista as well. I think, I think we gotta just step back a little bit, like Krista said, let the dust settle. We've got a process we need to lay out better. We clearly have some ideas of, of things that I think that we want out at the airport, and I don't think that FBO really addressed what we're looking for. And I think that, you know, we want what's best for the city of Fergus Falls, and sometimes we have to step back and, and, and just take an outside look at it and start over again. So that's where I'm at.
Thank you, Caroline.
I think also that if we do one of the clarifications, that if we're going to, you know, the RFP never requested that they be local. And if that's what we're doing, we need to be very clear about that.
I think that's a good point. Scott, did you have your hand up?
Field moment.
Maybe I misunderstood Anthony when you made the motion in the first place, but was it to approve their original recommendation by the Airport Advisory Commission or the revised recommendation?
Thank you. My motion or resolution was to accept the Airport Advisory Committee's recommendation of Sky Crew Services.
Okay. Because their original recommendation was for Alexandria Aviation.
I don't think we ever got that. I think they, it came back to the council asking for a two-week delay.
Okay. I think it came in the form of the staff presenting the Airport Advisory Commission's recommendation, and then we took the recommendation, told us from, the staff told us that that's what they had unanimously voted, and then it got, the conversation stopped at that point. So, I suppose that's technically correct. So, the motion that's on the table now, the resolution that's on the table now is to approve Sky Crew, the local company.
Correct.
For a
A two-year contract.
A two-year contract?
Is that, that was, that's what you said, correct?
Yep.
That's, the resolution is on the floor, and we're going to vote here shortly if anyone has any last thoughts.
I'd love to see, like, to add a few things. I mean, I, I think, you know, I, I agree wholeheartedly that, you know, the process needs to be reviewed, and I agree with Councilmember Ruth that, I think we have to work on the clarification of that. I mean, it was a very uncomfortable, I watched the two hours, my Councilmember Thompson, it was an uncomfortable two hours. You know, if it had been done even like a, a, a council debate where, you know, question one got answered to candidate one, and question two, you know, started, that would have been at least a fair process if you're all going to be in a room. But I kind of think that we're not Switzerland here, and, you know, and that we were here to appease all parties. I think we have to make a decision. That's part of our remit of being elected, is that we have to make a decision. You know, people elect us to do that. And I, I disagree with kicking the can down the road. That means the airport will be rudderless for another three to six months, depending on what time period that takes. If, you know, the consultant made the decision, not staff, and I think that's a clear distinction we have to make, is that, you know, the consultant was the one that made the recommendation, not staff. And so, you know, the Airport Advisory Commission, you know, wanted to obviously have personal interaction with the candidates, and then they made their recommendation from that process. And if we're going to go against this commission's recommendation, then I don't see the point of us having any commissions. We should abandon more, and then all decisions get made by the council. If we're going to go by purely staff recommendation, then we may as well abandon the council and let staff run the city. Because that's what we're saying, you know, and for the people that sit on these commissions, you know, how does it make you feel? You know, there are three Greater Fergus Falls members on the airport commission. If we go against this decision, to my mind, that's a vote of no confidence in Greater Fergus Falls in being able to make a decision. The other two members, there's two other members, you know, and they went along with it. So, I think five people that we entrust made this decision, not, not just one. And, and I kind of think then we have to reflect that we are taking a vote to send taxpayer dollars to Alex, and we, I just got, like probably all of you, an email from somebody in Alex that is concerned that Alex Aviation will be 50% managing our airport. So, I, I think that this is a two-year contract. This whole process started because the, the Airport Advisory Commission wanted to review the, the performance of the airport manager, because they were not getting the services out of, out of the airport. And when they, when you bring in your plane, you want to get it fueled, it was a challenge. You know, Alex, Alex is not bringing maintenance to the airport, and the flight school would be, you know, based out of Alex. So I think we have to look at what services we are getting. And, and I think each of them said, this is the services we're going to provide. The contract should be written to those specifications, so that, you know, if you don't perform, then, you know, we can terminate the contract and make it, make it very clear cut. So, I kind of think that we should have a Fergus first attitude as well, and, you know, where we, where we can. And I think that there's a lot of positive things to come out of this. You know, these people own a lot of property in town. You know, they don't do a bad job. They have a number of businesses that are also successful. You know, I believe that they would manage the business in, in this, with the same vein as they do their own businesses.
Thank you, Anthony.
Ben?
Sure. There's some last, last thoughts, and then we'll call for the vote on this one. And let's see, let's, go ahead, Scott.
Okay. I think that the trouble I have with this boils down to how the process was handled. There's been talk, a session about that. This process, I think, was difficult and ran into some problems along the way. I think that waiting and pushing this off to a later date is not the right answer. I think, as Anthony said, we need to make a decision, and I think I would recommend that we don't wait. Let's make a decision on that and do that tonight. There's been some conversation about whether or not it's Fergus first or local versus Alex, and there's this sense that somehow Fergus is in competition with Alex, and we want to win, and we don't want to be partners. I'm not so sure that that's a good, that puts us in a good position at this point. I'm inclined to think that the original recommendation that was given to us by the contractor that we hired to do the RFP in the first place, LNB, that process that they've done over and over and over and over, has been tried and true and done, and they did it again here, and then they got, had it kind of thrown back. As Anthony also said, and others as well, this isn't a lifetime contract. It's a window of time, and that if it doesn't work out, we cancel the contract, we look for somebody else. If Alexandria Aviation happened to currently be managing multiple airports, you know, if we were number 13 on a list of 12, you know, and they added one more, there wouldn't be any sense of them not being able to handle one more. The fact that it's the first one that's not their local one is how that tends to get a bigger attention, you might say. But even the local company that's been put forward, the people involved there have got multiple businesses. So the idea that you can't run more than one business and run something in more than one town, I don't find that to be a compelling argument either. So, with that said, I'm going to be voting in the negative on this. I'll be voting with Brent. I think that we ought to stick with the LNB recommendation. And as much as I would like to support the idea of a Fergus first, I think that this truly does what's in the best interest of Fergus Falls. It so happens that the people aren't necessarily Fergus Falls residents that are at the top of the ticket in the company, but there'll certainly be Fergus Falls people involved in the operations, as it's been promised and laid out in their information. I'll leave it at that.
Thank you. Thank you, Scott. Last, last comments, Brent?
Yep. Well, the big thing is you're talking about the amount of businesses they own and how they'll do this, you know, just as good as this one. The difference is, none of their businesses are aviation. His business is aviation. And it is not beneficial for him to put Alexandria first. And it is beneficial for him to make that airport thrive, because when that airport thrives, then it's more beneficial. There's more revenue in there and everything else, and everybody is going to benefit from it. And I already know that there's several people who use this airport. It's up in the air. They're, they're, they don't want to deal with the one that has been suggested. And I just want to know, I mean, this RFP that went through with this company, this is global. They do this for a living. The airport commission was involved in what do we want? What do we want out of our FBO? So, all that stuff was there. It's not like it just got shot at them. They did it. They got what they wanted, and then they didn't like it because they didn't get the candidate they wanted.
Thanks, Brent. Tom?
Um, just a couple quick notes. Procedurally, you know, there was talk about the interview process and dissatisfaction with that. And that was not, that format was not chosen by the advisory board members. And I don't, I'm not going to throw anybody under the bus, but that wasn't their call, first of all. And then, and then speaking to business experience, you know, another thing about, about Sky Crew, though, is that they're both professional pilots with thousands of hours visiting probably hundreds of FBOs across the country. So, if you get someone who's living it is to fly in and out of different airports and work with all sorts of different kinds of airports and airport operators and FBO managers, they're going to have a pretty good sense of what it takes, what a professional pilot expects from an FBO, and, and, and what it takes to make a successful FBO business, along with having an established business record. So.
That does not make them an FBO.
All right. Let's, let's, let's not go back and forth. Let's, let's recognize.
Object.
I would agree with Tom. I think you have to take into account that personal experiences as people that fly for a living.
Thanks. I think it's clear that not everyone in this council has some opinion on this issue. Just like some, everyone in this community doesn't have the same opinion on this issue. But we do have a resolution on the floor, and that is a two-year contract with Sky Services. And we have a second. So, I will, on that motion, on that resolution, I will call for the vote.
Yes.
No.
No.
Yes.
No.
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 A resolution is, does not pass to, to the five to two. Sorry. Thanks for the math, Lynn. All right. So, would someone, so what, where do we go?
Well, I want to make the resolution that we approve Alex Aviation.
Okay. There's a resolution to approve the
Alex Aviation.
Is there a second to that resolution?
I'll second.
There's a second to that resolution. Are we, have we all set our piece, both sides of this? Can we call for the vote? Roll call.
I've got more to say.
Roll call, please.
No.
No.
Yes.
No.
Yes.
No. That resolution fails as well, on the same vote of five to two. Interesting, isn't it? So.
I'd like to make a motion that we table this for a period of time and rework the process and begin again.
I did hear, thank you, there's a motion to, to hit pause, to rework the process. And did you, were you referencing?
Yes, what Justin had.
Some of the, Justin, so, is someone like to second that? Well, what you say and then get to, the set. I'll second to just for Clarifying again, you mentioned a group of, a working group to come up with a process. Is that what you said? I just feel, obviously, we all have differences of opinion on this issue, and I think that goes back to last week, my phone ringing and talking to quite a few people on both sides of the issue. I think it's in everybody's best interest to reestablish a working group, if you want to call it that. A couple of you from the council, a couple of you from the advisory, and a couple of staff members to make sure. I'd like to set a timeline on that motion, if we could. I don't want to kick this down six months, 12 months. I'd like an expectation in terms of when we establish the working, when we could come back to entertain an RFP or an RFQ. I think we need to identify, you know, from the proposal of all the four, they weren't the same proposals, which I wouldn't expect that because it wasn't an RFQ, but I think we need to identify exactly the hours of operation, exactly what services we're going to be writing for flight school and rental planes there or not there, and what our expectations are. So the, the folks applying, and I would, you know, accept and
you know, accept and, and want to appreciate the same folks to reapply and go through that process to make sure that we understand what we're getting out of the, the backend and we're not having to rewrite a contract per their proposal. This is what we're looking for. If you can do it, great. If not, then, you know, we'll have a dollar amount assigned to it. So I'd, I'd only like to change maybe, I don't know what's realistic, but get a timeline on when we're gonna expect to have that back before the interested candidates to reapply.
Did you men, did you mention specific positions? You said, you said personnel committee, is that what you said?
Yeah, I mean, that only makes sense, I think, if everybody in the council is good with that and.
Obviously airport advisory committee members.
And I think Brian and, unless there'd be another staff member that.
I, I would point out they're not employees. They're, they're contractors. So there's a difference between being a contractor and employee. So I'm not sure the personnel committee is the right place for it.
Sure, I just, I think you mentioned council members, I thought.
Well, maybe what's best is one on each side of the issue in the council, so whoever wants to volunteer. Then we can, how about Brent and Tom?
There's only one issue. There's one question I want, I want removed.
Sure.
Want local.
Okay, well, let's save that for the, for the vote.
So I'll recommend Brent and Tom from the city council.
Yep.
I'll recommend Brian from staff along with.
We have an HR professional, even though I know it's not an employee, I think Mike brings expertise there. Um, the only one that I would also maybe recommend is we have a, a professional aviator. Is that, is that something that um, that's, I've heard from that community that um they have, they have opinions as well, so. Um, and I don't know the occupations of the people on the airport advisor.
I think the professional aviators in the community sit on two sides, so I don't think you could. I think, I, I don't, I think you'd have to have one. You'd have to do a Tom and a Brent if you're going to do that.
Sure.
So we can, so this, we can maybe move this forward. Maybe we don't have to identify the working group tonight. I think staff can work on that and, and come back, but I think I'd like to see an even balance of that working group. So we're not just getting, and, and define the scope, define the process, get it, get it true tried and, and run it back through. But I would like tonight to have a timetable on when the expectation for it to come, not before us with the working group, but an answer and an RFP.
Well, and they also need to come back to the council, through the airport advisor community with a clear process that is in the public. Everyone knows whether they agree, you know, everyone knows if this is the process we're going to use to pick this position and then go forward and pick.
And that's got the benefit of having a roadmap for future occurrences that come up like this, which is something that we obviously.
Staff can certainly put that together, bring it back to us at our next meeting and with a timeline that we can all agree on and move this forward expeditiously. So that, that's the motion.
I'm good with that if, if Chris is good with that.
Yes.
On favor of that motion, say aye.
Aye.
Hold same sign.
Aye. I don't agree.
I said, Anthony, I did, I hear a second? No?
No.
So there's two, so that motion carries. Um, thank you. Under the consent agenda, there are six items now with the addition of the two contributions that Anthony, I'm sorry, that Andrew mentioned at the beginning of the meeting. Uh, if anyone wants to discuss any of those individuals, we can do that now. Seeing none, I would entertain a resolution approving the consent agenda as presented with the addition of the two donations. Thank you, Caroline. Would you like to second that resolution?
I'll second that, Your Honor.
Thank you, Justin. Roll call, please.
Yes.
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 A resolution. Under ordinance and resolutions, tonight we have a second reading of ordinance ten eight series, which is light industrial uses in the B five and B six zones. This has been for the council. We've had a first reading. If anyone has any questions, we'll direct them to our city attorney. Roll call, please.
Yes.
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 That ordinance is approved. Uh, item number two is a motion directing the city attorney to draft amendments to ordinance sixty-one six series, which is our code of ethics for elected officials, staff and committees. Andrew, did you want to talk about this at all?
No, I don't. Your honor, members, thank you. I, I may ask the city attorney to speak to this. Um, there's been some communications or, or concerns, I guess, expressed on behalf of the public related to what our code of ethics policy is and maybe the appearance of potential conflicts of interest that aren't being acknowledged, whether it be by council or the board authority or other boards and commissions. And we discussed last week, it might be a good opportunity to just bring this up and acknowledge the fact that this ordinance does exist. And then if the council through discussions want to expand the definition locally of what a conflict uh may be, that this would be the appropriate avenue to do that. So I don't know, Ralph, if you want to maybe talk about what's on the books and, and uh where you suggest maybe this group goes. Ultimately, we're looking for direction from you all. If you think the ordinance as it reads today is, is, is good, great. If you think it needs to go further or something needs to be changed, um, the suggested action is to direct the city attorney to draft those changes and bring them back. So.
I'll stop there.
Thank you, Andrew. Good evening, Ralph.
My recommendation is to let me review it in detail and come back with some suggestive changes. But one of the questions that's presenting itself is uh currently the code of ethics precludes uh public officials, which includes the council and committee members and staff in that matter, from participating in decisions that they have a financial interest in. And I think we can all agree that that's, that's, that's a good rule. The question is whether it should be expanded a little bit uh to include organizations that you serve for. Uh, and the question that presents itself is whether uh that should preclude a public official from participating in a decision as well. Um, I think it should. It doesn't currently say that. So that's one of the areas that I think we should look at, whether you wanted to expand to include that. And it doesn't necessarily mean that they, you know, that they can't serve on a commission. It just simply means that if you or an organization you serve as a board member on may benefit financially from a decision you're about to make, maybe you shouldn't make that decision. It's as simple as that. Uh, so currently the laws that, that we passed, and this is back in two thousand and eight. And uh, at, at that time, there was uh reasons to have this addressed and be addressed it. And uh, but uh, it, it could stand and update. And that's what I'm proposing is that let me take a crack at it, come back with some recommendations and see what you think about it. It's a fairly lengthy uh ordinance and I think we can pare it back considerably. We used to require financial disclosures of people to serve on committees and we haven't been doing that for a number of years just because people don't want to have to disclose their finances to serve on a committee. And we should probably take that out. At least that's my opinion. And just put the burden on everyone to simply identify a conflict if they know that they have a conflict. And so uh it would simply require uh a public official, which would include your committees, that if they knew that there was a conflict of them participating, what they would simply be required to do is say, hey, I got a conflict, I'm not going to participate. That's simple.
Sure.
I would also let, Your Honor.
Yeah, okay, we have a motion. And so uh, is there a second to that? Everyone wants that. Scott, there you go. Thanks. All right, thank you, Ralph. So just to be, to, to be clear, we do have a code of ethics because I have been, the public, we have, that was adopted in two thousand and eight. This body right now is going to have our city attorney review that, see if there's some updates and we're going to come back and have a discussion about what that code of ethics is. So appreciate that, Ralph. Yes, Scott.
Just as a comment, I think had I been around in two thousand and eight when this was coming forward, you've mentioned that there was some reason to deal with something at that time. I don't know what that might have been.
I do.
And maybe we'll learn about that as.
I think this has been a reason to do it as any because Sherry was on council at that time.
Yeah.
Well.
Where I guess I was going with it is, I think trying to codify all the actions of people is a difficult thing. And this could really get off into areas that are going to get to be real nitpicky and problematic. And so having, had I been there at that time, I probably would have said something like, let's not do this. Let's just be smart and if we've got a problem, say we've got a problem and say it. But trying to list everything, if you're this, if you're that, I just think it can open up something really complex and prob, problematic. But now we've got it. And if it needs fixing, I guess I, I think I'm open to seeing it fixed. And if you can make it shorter, all the better.
Thanks. Thank you, good, Scott. We have a motion and a second. On favor of that motion, say aye.
Aye.
Hold same sign. That motion carries. Thank you. Uh, item number three is a resolution extending the purchase agreement for Rivers Edge Investments LLC for the city-owned parking lot.
Yeah, thank you, Your Honor, members. This is pretty straightforward. The uh development or the purchase agreement we have between the city and Rivers Edge Investments for that city-owned lot next to Shopko uh was set to close on March first, so a couple of weeks from now. Um, in conversations with the developer, there's additional due diligence that needs to take place in order to uh move this forward. So they're making a pretty straightforward request of extending the closing on this project. And what we'd like it to read is on or before June thirtieth of twenty twenty-two. There are no other terms of the contract would be changed. Uh, we just simply update that date. Um, if their due diligence period concludes sooner than that and they're ready to move forward, great. If not, um, we would have to come back at that time, should we want to further extend it.
You're, Your Honor, I think, I think that's too far out. I mean, that's over a year. It's um from, from their due date. I, I think it should be shorter than that. But somebody else may have an interest in the property. They're locking up the property from, from somebody else having the opportunity to buy it.
Are you going to suggest another timeframe then, Anthony, or what?
Yes. I, I would suggest six months.
And then with, with, if they want to come back.
If they want to come again, they end up to come back again in six months. Yeah.
There's a resolution uh extending it for six months? That purchase agreement, would someone like to second that resolution?
So they're.
Well.
It would be on or before September first, twenty twenty-one, that.
Correct, yeah.
Is there a second yet or not?
Not a second yet. Someone like to second that?
I'll second that. Second, I have a question.
Sure.
Was, was that date picked by them? I'm assuming it's due to costs incurred associated with COVID increases and.
Yeah, I mean, I, I, I have to be careful as to what I say. Um, so I'll, I'll say the due diligence is ongoing. It's not likely that uh this building season, you're going to see the project happen like was originally anticipated. So I would anticipate that they're going to be asking for that date to, to go even further. Um, the request of the developer actually went beyond June thirtieth of twenty twenty-two and, and we said, well, it's, you know, let's come back if we need to go beyond that. So this is what I suggested, um, that we do June thirtieth, knowing that this building season's probably not a go. And June thirtieth gets us part of the next building season to know whether or not that's a lost building season. So that was the rationale behind that. Uh, whatever the council wants to do, it's, it's, it's fine. Communicate that accordingly and then you just have to come back.
So there's nothing magical about the June thirtieth?
Not at all.
Okay. There's a resolution and.
Could we spot the difference between what Anthony suggested and what Andrew, Andrew offered and March thirtieth of the next year? That'd be a nine-month extension.
I, I think that's too far out. I, I think, you know, the whole purpose is to get economic development and you're locking up a piece of property, a prime piece of real estate. Um, I mean, somebody else kind of did, did say if I don't have this for sale, then I would kind of make an offer. So I think that, you know, they went into this project and COVID was kind of about at that time. So it wasn't like COVID was a new thing. And so I think if, if they want to go beyond that, then they, then we need to see them and know why. Why isn't, why isn't moving must hold up? I mean, and asking for TIF, I mean, again, they're wanting a lot from the city, you know, um, they want TIF. Um, obviously they want a loan. So it's like if you want all those things from the city, then you, you need to also do something for the city, which is, in this case, keep to a timeline.
Yeah, I personally don't necessarily see a problem with the six-month extension that then could be extended.
I think I'd just like to see them come back and say like, why, why do I need?
Their project should viable six months from now. I think they'll be able to convince.
And if it's not, then it shouldn't be, you know what I mean?
No, they, and, and Your Honor, they may be prepared to say that now. I just probably shouldn't be the ones to say what, what some of the additional due diligence may be for, because it's really
Sure.
inside their project. So um, I, if, if that's the comfort level, I, I don't think that's problematic at all. We'll come back in six months.
I would certainly, it's not to be adversarial in any mean, by any means. I don't take it as that at all. Just bring it back in six months if, if they would like to extend it then. There's a resolution, there's a second. Roll call, please.
Yes.
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 The resolution is approved. Item number four is a resolution opposing Minnesota adopting California's Clean Car Initiative. And I'll just give a little background on this and then I know Lisa Workman is here with us tonight. So Lisa, if you would like uh add some comments after, in, in just a minute, you're, you're welcome to. Uh, but this, this resolution, which was drafted, I, I believe very well, um, very nicely by Lynn. Um, after a conversation with our local chamber of commerce and our local automobile dealers. And um the concern being that the proposed rulemaking by the Minnesota Pollution Control Agency would adversely affect Minnesota car dealers, particularly those in close uh relation to North, North and South Dakota borders where so much of the business goes across. I wanted to be clear that this is the intent of that meeting. Um, and the intent of this resolution is not to be partisan. This has become a very partisan issue. I don't want this Fergus Falls City Council to get um mired in partisan politics issue, political issues. Um, but I will say this, uh, I think we can oppose state mandates when the federal government is looking at doing something nationwide that would put all automotive, automotive dealers on the same playing uh field that would not negatively impact our local dealerships and our local economy. Just for reference, uh, there's the three automotive dealerships in, in Fergus Falls. Employ nearly two hundred people, generate a hundred and eighty million dollars in sales and have a payroll in excess of eleven million dollars. This is very, very important to our local economy. And again, I believe we can do this without making it a partisan issue. We're not, no one's opposed, I talked to all three of those dealers, no, no one is opposed to electric vehicles. They simply are opposed to Minnesota. Um, being, basically this would make Minnesota be in line with California whenever California changes rules, when the current administration in, in Washington DC is proposing that this is federal across the board and all dealers are on the same board. So that's, that's the, that's the background of the discussion. It's something I support and I do it in a nonpartisan way. Lisa, would you like to add anything? Good evening, Lisa.
Hi, thank you all. Uh, Mr. Mayor, members of city council and city staff. I, as a president of the Fergus Falls Area Chamber of Commerce, I just want to express my sincere thanks and gratitude on behalf of not just the dealers, but also there are so many um related businesses that rely on the dealerships. You know, their related vendors that are in Fergus Falls, the families that are impacted by their employment with the local dealers. Um, just thank you so much for, for considering the, the success of these local businesses and um for representing those local businesses when it comes to even mandates and rulemaking that may be passed um at the state level. You know, we're happy to follow along with federal guidelines. It just makes trade a lot easier. Um, in addition to that, you know, with, with my automotive history too, I know that there are many, many people who come from outside of Fergus Falls to do business with our local dealerships, but they're not only just doing business with them. They're going to restaurants, they're doing shopping, they're getting their taxes done, they're getting, you know, haircuts. They're spending money throughout Fergus Falls and, you know, many of these dealers, they're, they're bringing in people not just from North Dakota, but from South Dakota and beyond. So I think we need to keep those lines of commerce open. So I appreciate your consideration of this and, and thank you for that.
Thanks, Lisa. Someone like to offer? Thanks, Lisa. Someone like to offer a resolution?
I love that. You're on a second now.
Thank you. Thank you, Brent. Any comments? Roll call, please.
Yes.
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 A resolution is approved. Under boards, I'm sorry, under presentation claims, tonight we have claims in the amount of $2,492,731.29.
We can't pay them. Jim's not here.
Pardon?
I said, we can't pay them. Jim's not here.
I'll make a motion that we can't fail.
Thank you, Krista. Thank you, Caroline. If there's any questions, we'll direct them to Bill Sommer, our finance director, hearing none. Roll call, please.
Yes.
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 A resolution is approved. There are no board committee or department reports this evening. Under reports from staff and administrative officers, we'll call on our public works director, Guy Taylor, for an update on Otter Tail Power's street lighting project phase two. Good evening, Guy.
Good evening, Your Honor. Thank you. As we look forward to the 2021 construction season, we're hoping to complete the phase two of a streetlight conversion project. Otter Tail Power did a lot of work on the west side of town, moving into the center part of town and down to the south at Vernon and Court Vernon and Union intersection. And I hope you all noticed the nice clean white light that they've installed for us. So phase two will potentially complete the project with caveat that maybe some of the decorative lighting that we're proposing might be phase three. So we've got Nate Cundy, operations manager from Otter Tail Power here tonight. You've all probably gotten pretty familiar with Nate, but he's here to shed some more light on the subject.
Yeah. Good evening, Nate. Thanks for being here.
Will it be clear light?
All right. Good evening. Once again, I'm Nate Cundy, I'm the operations manager with Otter Tail Power Company. Got a couple of slide decks here. We'll just kind of recap what we did in 2020, what we have planned for 2021, what I'm going to be asking for you tonight. And then kind of recap some other projects that we have going on in conjunction with the city that we're continually working on, just to kind of give you a little bit of information and background. So, good night, next slide, please. So before we begin, just like to reflect on our company values, one of them being community. And really, it's right in our mission statement to improve the quality of life in areas which we do business. So it may seem like I'm here to sell you something, but it's really your decision whether you want to move forward with it or not. We're just saying, there's an opportunity to partner with Otter Tail for a low-cost option for the city. So no pressure that's saying we have to do this or not. However, I believe, I was here last year, the city didn't pass a resolution recognizing that we are a low-cost option as far as area lighting goes. And I believe the resolution states that Otter Tail has a right to supply area lighting throughout the city. So what I'm going to show you today and go through is really the recap and then let's plan this next slide. So recap of 2020, we installed 92 aluminum alloy holes and 37 wood bolts. So the completed roadways that we did was Lincoln along with the frontage roads and basically North Union, parts of Vernon, the side streets of Mill Court, heading north to the railroad tracks, kind of use that as our, as our divider. Those were done in aluminum alloys. We did a part kind of on the Vernon area due to some failures and some damage that got done in the storm. One piece of was slated for last year that we did not do is basically Union from Lincoln down to the railroad tracks. As there's going to be a road project coming up and felt that it was probably, since the curved lines and stuff were going to be changed, it's a good opportunity for us to get in there and put the infrastructure in. And then we have a proposed change to put decorative to match what the rest of the downtown areas. Wood poles we did were on basically Frontier, College and Tower Road up to College Drive. Next slide, please. So here's a map of just kind of the overview. Green is all aluminum alloy. The purple are the wood poles. And that's what we completed in 2020. So next slide, please. Built back better lighting, all right? So I'm going to here tell you, here's the deal. Next slide. If you remember from the last one, I jumped in there, so. So what I'm asking for tonight, I guess, is, last time we talked, we talked about some potential for decorative. Our proposed tariff rates are still at the PUC waiting to get approval. We're hoping to have that or expecting that by May 1st. So there's a couple of things that we'll be asking for tonight. Is one is approval of the contract, move forward with the remaining aluminum alloy structures that we already have a tariff established for. Second thing is the intent to use OTP decorative lighting based on what our proposed tariff rates are now. I got some information back from our regulatory department that said, we're not going to go above these. The PUC isn't going to recommend we charge more. If anything, our prices would be reduced. What I'll propose to you tonight is really like the all-in worst-case scenario, I should say worse, but this is what we're proposing. We're pretty confident about what we got. So really what we're looking at doing is the aluminum alloy structures on Kabor, Washington, from Sherman to Sheridan. Vernon, basically from Whitford down to Dairy Queen, and then Pebble Lake Road from Dairy Queen down to Highway 210. So that's all replacing old municipal-owned high-pressure sodium fixtures right now. The decorative that we have recommended for 21 right now that I'd like to see for sure move forward, because it just kind of makes sense construction-wise when we are talking about road projects and then also just getting the infrastructure installed. Really going to be that South Union from Lincoln down to the railroad tracks, side streets of Court Mill and Cascade. And basically that's just from Kabor, South Lincoln. And then the two blocks of Vernon between Mill and Whitford, which is basically in front of the hospital, an empty park, and in front of the library. The library did request decorative. Next slide, please. So here's another map with my scribbles on it, but the green, keep in mind, is existing. The orange is what we have proposed for the aluminum alloys that I just talked about. And that's what we'll be covering the contract tonight with. The purple areas there are the decorative installations in 21. And then what's in blue is really kind of what Guy had referenced, potentially phase three. Knowing that a May 1st approval date leaves us a relatively short construction period when we're looking at probably a 12 to 16 week lead time on materials. Then it gets us into the fall and it's just kind of not really setting us up for a great construction season at that point. So I would say we, we look at what we have proposed for 21, move forward with that. And then really kind of look at a phase three potentially in 2022 that we complete the rest of the downtown area. Next slide, please. So I actually, I was here for tonight, really kind of talked about him, really just executing that contract. And Guy, I sent you over that. Basically consists of 49 aluminum alloy structures and LED 10s and LED 13s. And that's based on the photometric design that Border States Electric completes for Otter Tail Power when we have these proposals. So I'll show you some maps of kind of what the photometric layout looks like. That means we can always change things up as requests or as we need to change them up. And then we would just amend the contract at that point. So, and then like I said, we'd just be establishing the intent to utilize OTP decorative rates effective May 1st. So we'll plan it. We'll order the material. We'll get the infrastructure in. You won't see anything built until they're actually in service, which will most likely be after May 1st when the tariff is approved. And at that point, once the tariff is approved, I'll come back to council with another contract with that count and tariff rates for decorative lighting. Next slide, please. So the decorative options that we have picked out here are the Granville options. Basically, I think there's one right behind City Hall, except instead of green, it's black. They all have the banner brackets on it. Next slide, please. Then on the intersections, we're going to be using what we'll call the esplanade option. And it's essentially what's on the Tower Road Veterans Bridge area, except once again, they're black. And these are a 30-foot standard. They just give you a little better intersection lighting, but in between the intersections, it's going to be that Granville. Slide please. So these maps are kind of hard to see with the photometric design, but here's kind of what Border States does for us to take a look at the roadways that we want to do. The photometric layout is actually turned off on this particular slide, but they essentially take standard, put the wattage of the fixture there, do a projection of the light shed, and then that's how they space them out. So that's slide please. So that first slide was north of the river, kind of what was planned. This is south of the river was planned. Get down into the Union, north, south of the railroad tracks at two-block radius. Keep in mind that that was expedited into last year due to those failures that were placed. Next slide. And then here's the one for Pebble Lake Road. And. Excellent. So once again, some of the benefits partnering with OTP for municipal lighting. There's low months of costs, it's a flat tariff rate. They're approved by the Minnesota Public Utilities Commission. So the only way that those rates change is if we file a rate increase in front of the Minnesota Public Utilities Commission. And really, they don't really focus on lighting a whole lot. So if they do increase, it's very marginal. No large upfront costs in the city, so you're not having to go out and bond, pay interest, try to scope a project together, put together RFPs, no more challenging that can be. So no city maintenance also, so it's, I'm sorry. So I mean, there's no city maintenance associated with it. Otter Tail just basically takes care of everything. There's no cost of energy associated with it. It's all in one. There's no underground locating. I mean, we just reinstall, maintain it, we take care of it, we service it, all costs included. So. And then also, once again, there's the potential for reduced liability, you know, it's where you can need to talk to your insurance provider and say, hey, if we unload our municipal lighting system, can we get better premiums? And just not having to deal with cars smacking poles and who's replacing it, who's called, got called out in the middle of the night to clear out the roadway, et cetera. OTP takes care of all that. So that's like. Some of the impacts to the community, just like you, like we've seen before really, but it's updated wiring, there's reduced glare with the LED lighting. All of our fixtures or standards have breakaway bases on us. When a car does smack it, it's not just sitting there. The actual, it's designed to break and fall away from a car. They're visually appealing. Everything's rust resistant. They're all aluminum alloy. Even our decorative stuff, it's an aluminum alloy, so it's not a steel that is constantly painted. It's clean, clean white light, like you've noticed throughout town here. It's pretty drastic comparison when you're traveling down, you know, Union and see the nice white light and then you hit the stoplight and it's like, oh geez, look at all that glare. But once again, just want to reassure that the outlets and the banner brackets are included as well as the streetlight holding brackets. But one point of clarification is that your whole lightway system was controlled by a relay point. So they all came on at one time, they all went off at one time. And your outlets and Christmas lights are the same thing. OTP systems run independently, so they are energized 24/7. That means the outlets plug your photo, your Christmas decorations into, if you don't have individual photo control on them, they're going to be on 24/7. So prior to that, they'd come on, go off with your relay. So city staff's been known about that since we started the project too. And I believe there's some talk about maybe updating that type of stuff as well. So. And then at the end of the day, it really just demonstrates an investment in improving the quality of life in the community. So I mean, we all want our downtowns to be aesthetically pleasing. Nobody likes old steel streetlights that are looking all wonky and falling over and out of date. And when you look at it, I mean, it's, you're really saving energy at the end of the day. And I'll show you why we're continuing to be your lowest-cost option to do that. So. Next slide, please. So kind of recap what we talked about. 2021, the phase two, we're going to look at installing 49 aluminum alloys and LED fixtures on the identified pathways. The contract's in front of you. It's for 15, 64, 28 a month, additional onto what the city's street lighting account is. The establish the intent to use the decorative lighting for 2021 on the identified roadways that that really colorful map showed you. And that basically consists of 61 Granville structures or poles and then seven esplanades and posed monthly tariffs associated with that. So you're looking at, you know, $6,500 a month on top of that for decorative ones. The other piece that we've talked about is the riverfront development project that's going to take place just on the north side of the river here. And there's some proposed lighting with that. Talking with the consultants and with city staff, the desire is to utilize OTP decorative lighting standards for that too, simply because you have a one monthly all-in cost. You're not incurring those lighting costs up front when you're bonding to the project, should bring total project cost down. And then at the end of the day, the maintenance piece falls back on OTP. So locating underground wires, replacing the fixtures, standards, anything that's broken, vandalized, et cetera, is all done from OTP. So, next slide, please. Once again, just to kind of show you, put things into perspective. If the city were to want to go out and do decorative lighting on their own, you're thinking, holy cow, 90 bucks a month for one decorative light? But when you put that into perspective, I believe it was '05 was the last decorative lighting project the city did of the RTC. 23 fixtures, cost about a quarter million dollars. So if you were to try to do this by those standards at what OTP is, what you'd be paying for the tariff, you'd be looking at roughly having to install that $11,000 per light. And then you'd have to look at probably about an 11-year, 12-year payback before it'd be worth it. And that's assuming that you can buy and install it at what Otter Tail can buy it and install. And you benefit of having 400 communities and able to socialize our costs. And then we have buying power. And then subsequently, our contractors do a lot of work for us. We're going to reduce rate too. Compared to what the city would probably have to go out and do on their own. So that's kind of where the breakeven point is. You'd be looking at at least 15-plus years, depending on what you guys wanted to do. And then keep in mind, you still have the maintenance piece. You still have the cost of energy on top of that. This is all a one-time monthly cost associated with that. So that's kind of the lighting piece. I can pause if you guys want to approve the contract now before we kind of get talking at this mother pieces that we're working with the city on, or would you like to continue on to?
Can I just say, is there a reason we're going to black from green?
Yeah, Otter Tail only offers black. You have any color you want, as long as it's black, right?
Black's class? The only.
No, it's just more that we have some green decorative lights. That's all.
Yeah. And I mean, we went with black based on, so our materials supplier said black actually fares better and holds up better compared to traditional colored standards such as a green. That's susceptible to less sun fading, which is kind of surprising considering it's darker. But we do have 400 communities that we serve that have expressed, and there's several of them that expressed interest in decorative lighting. So to keep costs low, we need to really just stick with one color and limited offerings. Otherwise, if you get too detailed where what Fergus wants is this style and this color, but Pemiji wants this style and this color, then all of a sudden we lose out on our buying.
We don't want to be like Pemiji.
Yeah, Justin, go ahead.
I think I've asked this before and I'm going to apologize right now, but I know there's talk about Odie the Goon and I don't know how that could or couldn't play into this. It's different than street lighting, but I know one of the baseball fields out there, the lighting's not really adequate for night games. And the softball complex, I think, could, could use a facelift as well. But I don't know how that, maybe that's phase seven or something, but I think I asked that last time. I don't know. I can't remember how it was answered, if that could be included at some point in a project or if that's something different, because it's not street lighting.
So the next slide, actually, we talk about Delagoon Park and kind of what exists out there.
Sorry to steal your thunder.
It's not actually related to hall field lighting, which OTP doesn't exactly have those offerings. I'm saying that we wouldn't be open to exploring those if that was so desired, but at this time, we don't offer that sort of service or have that type of stadium lighting available in our tariffs.
Sounds good. Thanks. Thanks. So the only question, well, the only question I have is when we, this was brought forward roughly a year ago, I believe. Originally, staff had recommended, made the recommendation that they think this is a, this bill, I know you would, you know, you felt pretty strongly a year ago that this was the best.
Yep, it made the most sense. And, you know, we worked that into the budget.
Yep, it made the most sense. And um, you know, we worked that into the budget. Um, because I know we. We added to our budget for 2021. Is that correct, Guy? In planning for that. Um, and then of course. I like the way Nate has it laid out that. You, you act on the aluminum now. Yes, give your intent that we continue with Otter Tail. And that we can look at the budget or how this will affect 2022 as well.
Sure. So staff recommendation is still remains the same? Yeah. Okay. Would someone like to offer a, I guess we need a resolution to approve that contract?
Oh, that.
Tom?
I'll second it.
Thank you, Brent. Any further discussion or questions of Nate before we vote on that? Roll call, please.
Yes.
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 A resolution is approved. Thanks, Nate. Go ahead.
Thank you. Next slide, please. All right. So as mentioned, Delagoon Park. So I'll kind of give you a snapshot of what currently exists out there. So Delagoon Park. Um, has a, you're currently a primary meter customer out there. So what that means is that the high voltage cable that. Exists basically at the entranceway to Delagoon Park. It's actually owned by the city. Entire electric infrastructure is owned by the city out there. Primary meter. So what that means is basically you guys have to take care of your electric system, right? You got to locate it. You got to. Uh, deal with the faults. You got to hire an electrician to come fix those. And really kind of what you end up with is a not super great product at the end of the day because it's aging. And you're starting to have liability issues out there, which are actually in turn affecting Otter Tail's liability on that circuit. So one of the things that we're doing for you now with that is once you have a fault out there. Utilize OTP equipment. We come out there, we locate the fault, we provide you the material to fix it, but due to that N E S C codes. We can't actually fix it because it's dubbed private, right? It's not owned by the public utility. So. We bill you for all that. Um, and then you have to hire an electrician on top of it to fix it, dig it up, X, Y, and Z. So. Knowing that that problem exists and likely would need to replace the infrastructure out there sooner than later. Um, talking with city staff, we've been proposing that OTP assume ownership of the primary system out there. But the city would have to install secondary uh services at each one of the service locations. So what does that mean? Means basically you got to hire an electrician, put a socket, meter socket and a panel at where your services are going to be located. So. OTP would take ownership of the cable, transformers, secondaries that would feed that service. And then from that point on, it would be just like any other. Uh, electric meter privately owned after the meter type stuff such as ball field lighting, concession stands, water pumps, et cetera. So what this sets us up for though.
Nate, Tom is, I think Tom. Um, how many locations is that?
Uh, I can't remember exactly how many there were. Um, we actually have a meeting set up to go out there with three different electricians, city staff and OTP. Uh, just to talk about what the tentative plan would look like and just try to get some, you know, loose bits put together on basically. What's it going to cost? Does it make financial sense to do it? Um. Kind of at that point. So really this is just kind of a proposed project. There's no action. This is kind of information getting out in front of us since I had the opportunity to come speak.
Sure. Yeah, just curious.
Um, some of the things that that opens up for though is the opportunity to really do system upgrades. So OTP wires it. And there's some new load out there to justify uh spend. Then we come in and basically do a cable replacement project and we get up to date cable. Projected 50, 60-year lifespan. We're good to go. Also, it's uh sets up easy expansion for. Any other electrical systems out there. So say you get your bonding, uh, expand the campground. And you say, all right, we want a service here, here, and here. OTP, we come in, we put the projector in, put the transformers in, put the secondary to wherever your service panel is. And there's just no upfront costs in the city with that. Um, we got the BMX track that's relocating out there. They've requested power to be served from Otter Tail Power Company. However, that essentially we're the closest OTP online. It's almost double in length that we'd have to serve them. And subsequently, we pass that cost on to them since the service only is benefiting them. So it's in their best interest to, to actually shorten the service length up if OTP took ownership of the primary cable. Um, the other thing that it would allow is a proposed white wave system out there. It's similar to what we're doing in town. Uh, most likely going to be just like Woodpole, like we did on Frontier College, um, around the ball field area and along the entrance. So. If OTP were to take ownership of the uh primary system, then that invites us more. Beat point opportunities within the footprint of Delagoon Park, which keeps the wire footage lower and ultimately the cost under control. So. That's the proposal, that project that we're going to be working on continuously from Delagoon Park. Any questions on that one? Scott?
As it is now, then there's just one meter that basically runs everything out there, whether it's the lighting in the baseball fields.
Yeah.
Or field or anything. It's just all in one thing. So if we wanted to even try for the sake of. Accounting, uh, know if this ball field was being used more or less or wanted to bill it as a part of the rental package according to the electrical usage, if they were. If we do this, that would allow us the ability to break that down. Is that right?
That's correct. Yeah. But yeah, right now you wouldn't be able to differentiate what is actually drawing on that. It's all lumped under one, one primary meter.
I could see advantages as far as the ball fields and the concessions and things like that as being pretty obvious, but then beyond that. Uh, for the campground, as we look to expand and improve the campground, uh, this would seem to be a pretty good move to make that happen in a good way.
Yeah.
Any other questions for Nate?
All right. We got one more slide here and one more project that we're working on. Next slide, please. Oh, go back. So riverfront development, um, a project slated, uh, to take place here in construction season of 21. So just to kind of give you a overview of what OTP is going to have as part of this project. Um, is we're going to be, if you look out here, you'll notice that pretty much along the entire river corridor, OTP has facilities located there. Pretty much all the way basically from Boot Lake down to Piscata Dam. So right away, uh, this next year, we're going to be relocating our facilities between. Union or Orton Mill on the two-block stretch will be bearing underground facilities to dedicated green spaces, basically on the south side of the alleyway. Uh, to serve the locations on Lincoln as well as plan for service locations in the plaza or the potential amphitheater, whatever else is coming as part of that. Um, but there's a larger scale project in play that really allows OTP to remove all the facilities along the river corridor. It's a pretty substantial project for us. So uh, we have to buy justification to our board to basically get funding for the project. That would essentially allow us the opportunity to remove all the overhead facilities along the river corridor. And the dairy property and the substation on the dairy property, relocate some of those facilities near uh the Piscata Dam. And then utilize our third substation, um, and actually develop a new express feeder for the town. So we'd actually be improving the reliability indices. Um, along, well, what we call abuse feeder. So it's kind of that section of town, if you will, along that corridor. It'd actually be getting a new express feeder built to serve that load. So that's kind of what uh, what we're looking at. Uh, the other thing that we're currently kind of looking at is some solutions for municipalities that have. Current municipal white wave systems that are already converted to LED. That don't want to deal with the maintenance, don't want to deal with the replacement piece, but. We don't feel it's fair to slap you with a $90 tariff from your already having the fixtures and everything installed. So. If that's something that the city is interested in doing, or if they have decorative, or if you have decorative lighting that hasn't been converted to LED. I'd like to be part of those conversations and try to develop a solution that works for everybody. So. Um, I guess that's, that's really all I got for you tonight. Any questions on, on those projects?
No. Thank you.
All right. Thank you. Awesome.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Uh, item number two is a update on the city's snow removal process. Uh, if you call on. Again, Public Works Director, Guy Taylor. Good evening, Guy.
See if I can keep this item a little more brief. I don't know. I'm not saying. Good information, Nate. Um, so we were asked a couple of weeks ago to bring back, uh, have a discussion on the snow removal process and. In the memo that you all got in your packet, I uh sent out the policy that was adopted back in 1997, I believe. And um. It basically just details out how we go about it with uh each snowfall event. If it's uh two to three inches of snowfall. We, we respond out there with our equipment, or if we hear uh before that amount has fallen from law enforcement that we should be out there, we respond. Um. When we're out there during an event, we're keeping the priority roads and the emergency routes open. And then we wait until the snow event has stopped and then uh we'll go out with a full-scale uh, uh, snow removal operation or snow plowing operation, I should say. Um, for that snowplow operation, it's about a eight to 12-hour process depending on the amount of snow. And um. That's completed and then within uh the next day after that snowplow operation has uh been completed. We do a snow removal operation downtown, uh, cleaning out the snow from the uh curb and gutters and uh hauling it out to our uh storage site. Um, this all gets done with the, the budget that you've set, about $646,000 for 2021. Staff um is comprised of park department, street department, and some utility staff that operate all the equipment. Um. The um. Snow plow operations um. That have been going on this way, it's, it's fairly effective. We do hear um concerns from residents occasionally on um. Not getting it all the way to the curb line and um. That is complicated by uh the amount of cars that are parked on the streets. And with each snow event, we do utilize. Facebook, knowing not every resident is using Facebook, but we, we put a notice out there that. Plowing will start at such and such a time and date and um please remove your vehicles from the street. Um, that. Works somewhat. It's not a hundred percent effective, obviously, and um. It's just a matter of people potentially not having the option of getting their car off the street or it's just not convenient that. The spot on their yard that they could be off the street isn't as close to their front door maybe. So um. We do have a provision in the code that we can declare a parking emergency. Uh, to my knowledge, it hasn't been utilized, but we have it there and it's, it's good to have it there just in case. We do have a year of such tremendous amount of snow that we would have to do that. But um, it's our recommendation that we affirm with the policy that we've got in place from 1997. The practices and the procedures that we utilize right now, um, continue on this route and not implement a, an odd even type of uh process into our policy. There's one additional piece of language that we need to add into the policy, which just details the parking restriction that was put into place in 2019.
Thank you, Guy. Any questions?
I just got one. I mean, for the people who don't have parking, you know, either a driveway or a place out back and they have to park in the street. I, I understand we don't want them parking their cars in your yard in the summertime, but I mean, if they were to literally clear a spot in their yard to be able to pull it off the street. Would the city have a problem with that?
We would not have a problem with that.
Yeah, I mean, because it's just in the wintertime. It's just creating a way to, they might have to drive over a curb. I mean, but. We already have a bunch of people that do that already, but if it's not doing any damage and they can get it up into their yard and do a spot they keep cleared out.
That would be preferable that having it on the street.
Yeah, for sure.
Yeah.
I got a, I got a question just because you brought up the snow. It's not in regards to our policy, but I've had a couple of questions. Um, beginning of the year, especially when we started getting snow and have we ever looked at and, and. Probably wouldn't make sense in terms of efficiency, but. Can't remember what town it has, but it has like a trap door on the end of the plow where.
Snow gate, yeah.
Close it so it doesn't go over your driveway and then reopen it. Have we ever looked at that? People have asked me and I didn't know how to answer that. So have we ever looked at that and why or why not?
Yeah, we've looked at it um in a cursory kind of a way, just looking at it, um, how it would.
Work and it add time to the plow.
Right, definitely. And how it would work in a real tight residential area like what we've got in the main part of town. It would be pretty problematic, I think, in a rural section or Stony Brook Manor, Bayview Heights, somewhere like that. It would make some sense, maybe. It would. Um, work better, but when you got driveway after driveway and an alley mixed in between. It just, it, it would add a tremendous amount of time.
Then you sprinkle some cars parked in there too.
That's what I, I figured, but because I got asked, I figured I, this was a prime time to ask, but I figured that was.
The time is a big factor and cost too. Those gates, we'd have to outfit three graders with that gate and the equipment is not cheap.
Thank you.
All right. Thank you, Guy. Um, and with that, we'll move along.
I think the question of for the resident was kind of, which we haven't addressed was the alternative parking. I was, I can't remember exactly what is.
Odd and even.
Yeah, odd even, yeah.
Yeah, and the rec.
Yeah.
But I think what I'm hearing in the recommendations you're making is, is that the system that we're currently using is.
We stay the same.
Yep.
That's our staff's recommendation.
Um, thank you, Guy. All right, two more, I believe relatively quick updates. Andrew, are you going to give the capital improvement? Is that you?
Of course me. I'm not.
Oh, boy. Beef and Bill, some of our finance director, don't usually go on the same set.
I know, I know.
We love you, Bill. We're just.
You have the memo in front of you. We're not going to go over anything with that capital improvement plan tonight. But we met a year ago to really kick that process off. COVID came, we put a stop on that. We're going to resurrect that plan now. Um, I know Lynn sent out an email to you earlier today trying to schedule a date. Will maybe take an hour or two. Um, we'll bring a, an updated plan from staff to you. Um, so we have a starting place because certainly. You have done capital improvement work throughout the year. I mean, when we're talking about projects and, you know, looking at different things, that's all part of it. We're going to put that in the plan, bring that to you and we'll kick that off. So the rest of it you can see in the memo and I'll leave it at that.
Thank you, Bill.
Not to spoil it down here, on that last item, it would be good, as Guy mentioned, to affirm the policy because there is a question out there as to whether or not we're going to continue to do it that way. And then as he mentioned, there's language that needs to be included in that, that updated language from 2019. So I would suggest if you guys are willing to just make a resolution. Affirming the policy and adding that additional.
Language from 2019 that was approved. Are you, uh, is there someone who'd like to offer that? Thank you, Anthony. And we can do that by motion, I believe. Correct? Well. Let's update it with the resolution then. That's all right. Roll call, please.
Yes.
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 That resolution is approved. And finally, I, Chief, are you uh willing to give us a little update on the coyote situation in town?
Yeah, I was going to say, yeah, we, there's a shortage of roadrunner.
You better contact with Ashen.
No, it uh, you, you know, we, we do live in a, in a rural community and it's not uncommon to have wild animals uh. Roaming the streets, especially at night. Uh, some have two legs, some have four. This year, it's probably been a little bit more with the coyotes. Um, this is the mating season for coyotes. So that's. Part of the reason why there's been so much activity from about uh February to early March. Uh, is, is the normal mating season for them. Uh, also, it's not uncommon for coyotes to become. Uh, obviously more active in the wintertime, uh, looking for food, that kind of thing. So. Um, you know, and, and we, you know, I know there was a report uh by the one citizen uh who saw, you know, a couple of coyotes chasing a dog. Uh, at night. Um, you know, we haven't had any reports of coyotes attacking domestic animals or, you know. Uh, being aggressive towards humans. It's very, very uncommon for a coyote to uh, uh, attack a human. Uh, I would just tell the public, um. You know, the biggest thing is, well, one, you shouldn't have your dogs kind of roaming around anyways. They should be leashed or uh, or tied up. Um, and two, you, you know, you can kind of minimize uh the activity and there's, there's kind of three areas in town that the officers have been kind of watching, but. By reducing uh things that you might leave out as a food source, uh, that coyotes might be interested in. Uh, that could certainly help, but I think just give it a little time. I think uh nature's. That could certainly help, but I think just give it a little time. I think uh, nature's course will take a different path and they'll soon be kind of on their way and, and not an issue, but uh, without a doubt, definitely a little bit more activity from coyotes this year than we've seen in the past year, so.
Okay. There is a member of the public who has his, Kevin has his hand up, so we're gonna recognize Kevin. Please, I, I guess you may have a comment on the last item. Go ahead, Kevin, go ahead.
Yes, I do. Uh, that odd even parking, uh, I have a question, especially for Guy. Um, with the parking, what if somebody doesn't move their vehicle for a week? Or they just, they'll move it and they have an SUV and they keep driving over where they found. And I have to go out and shovel my street so I can park my car out there, and I'm disabled. I mean, there's a lot of elderly people that have to do that to be able to put their car back in front of their house. That odd even sense, I grew up in Minneapolis-St. Paul, they've done it since I've been born. And they have a bigger population, they have plenty of street parking, we have a lot more. I don't understand how that would not be beneficial for society up here. Like I, in, when I went in front of the city council two weeks ago on uh, Fergus Falls News Group, I have hundreds of people that agree with me. I mean, there's people walking down the middle of the street, because we don't have sidewalks on every street, but they have to go twelve feet out around the vehicle that's not plowed. Pushing a baby stroller, locking her dogs. I mean, that, that's public safety, plus it would save the, the city a lot of money.
Thank you, Kevin. Guy, did you wanna? Thank you, Kevin. Guy, did you wanna respond?
Just briefly, as far as uh, any cars that are left on the street for an extended period of time, if he any resident wants to call to Public Works or call to the law enforcement facility, uh, take a, add a license plate number and call us and uh, PD will get out there and put a tag on that vehicle and uh, by code, car can't sit on the street for more than twenty-four hours in one place at a given time, so it's, it's gotta be moved and um, as far as sidewalk clearing, um, ordinance does address that as well. Um, it's supposed to be cleaned within twenty-four hours after the snow event has stopped, so that, that's not just snow, that's snow and ice is to be removed, so. Um, if you's out there, then uh, they need to be
The public's gonna have to call.
Thank you, Kevin. Thank you, Guy. Thank you. And with that, I do not believe there's any other business to come before the council. Uh, next meeting will be February twenty-fourth, seven AM, the committee, the whole, followed by March first, five thirty.